We'll start.
I'll have Greg do it.
Okay, hi. We're calling the Northborough School Committee meeting of Wednesday, December 7th, or December 5th to order. The first item on the agenda this evening is action on open meeting minutes for November 5th.
You're the chairperson?
Yes.
I move that we accept the Northborough School Committee open meeting minutes of the Monday, November 5th, 2018 meeting as stated.
I second that.
Any discussion? All those in favor? The second item on the agenda this evening is a presentation by the Northborough Education Foundation and I believe we have, is it Ms.?
Yes, we have a representative from Northborough Ed Foundation coming with us to share all of the good work. I think we've saved you a seat at the end of the table. We're thrilled to have a representative from the Ed Foundation here with us this evening because certainly throughout the year they are gift givers and supporters of education in Northborough. And we appreciate all of the hard work that you do on behalf of our students and our teachers who work above and beyond and our administrative team who oftentimes submits grants as part of your grant funding program which really has sustained and helped us grow in so many innovative ways over the years, certainly with our one-to-one initiative that you very successfully launched and far exceeded your own goals as set for providing technology in the classroom for our teachers. So, on behalf of the administrators and our school staff, students, thank you so much for everything you do for our students. And we're thrilled to have an update. A lot of award winners again this year.
Yes, absolutely. Thank you for having me and thank you for your support of the Northborough Education Foundation and of course our students every day. My name is Kim Haven and I am here on behalf of the Northborough Education Foundation. I am the new Grants Committee Chair, moving over from the fundraising side, so I've gotten to see both ends, raising the money and now giving out the money, which is a lot more fun. So, I just wanted to tell you a little bit about what we granted this past September. We granted almost $70,000 to the Northborough Public Schools. We had a theme this past year of Small World, Global Children, and we had several grants that really were very creative and really took on embrace that theme and I wanted to tell you a little bit about a few of those. One of them was the Global Read Aloud, which was at the Lincoln School. One book connects to the whole world and so the students read it and connect with other students from around the globe. We had three different virtual reality grants that we were able to fund. So, several of the schools now in Northborough have virtual reality sets where they can visit places around the world right from their classroom. So, we're really excited to see those in action and to hear how those are going. And another one was a membership to IRN, which is the International Education and Resource Network at the Peaslee School where students will be able to collaborate with other students in classrooms around the world. Along with that, we had a lot of grants for books that were really creative. One that addressed science standards through literature. Another was STEM through fairy tales and another one was focused on a mighty girl with strong female protagonists. We funded some drama headsets, a new garden at Peaslee, thermal cameras, wind turbine kits, think tank furniture, and also a really big professional development program where we brought in, the schools have brought in Greg Tang to work with all of the teachers and the students and make the family math nights. And from all accounts, that's been going really well as a way to kind of bring the math curriculum together throughout the whole town. This year, our new theme is called Taking a Team Approach and we just think that, you know, together we can do so much more and that's really where it came from. So, we're hoping that the grants will consider targeting that theme through interdisciplinary projects, including those within schools but also those that incorporate other schools and the community. And also, we can look at the theme as a way to help students develop their abilities to work effectively in teams because we know that that's so important. Most of the schools have had an NEF rep in already this year to talk to the teachers about that and we appreciate the principals giving us time to do that and to talk to the staff and we hope that they'll reach out and that you'll reach out if there's any questions and we look forward to seeing some really great ideas this year as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'd just like to say thank you for everything that you do, especially for the teachers because I know the grants, you do them, you mentioned the ones in the fall. Will you be doing other grants throughout the year, like in February or spring if necessary?
No, we grant just one time. Of course, the teachers and administrators are ordering what they've asked for throughout the year and then we pay them off throughout the year. But, the process to apply, first there's an intent to apply and that is a rolling process. It started back on November 1st and it goes through May 1st. So, ideas can be submitted and we give feedback to make sure that, you know, help them meet the criteria that we're setting, let them know if it's worth moving forward with it and give some feedback. And then by July 1st, the final grant application is due and we review them over the summer and then make the final awards in September. And so, it's just one time per year. But, we raise money throughout the year, starting with the gala in September. We have the Gala Junior in February, Trivia Night in April, and the Mother Daughter Princess Tea Party in May. So, all of those events throughout the year raise the money. We pool it together, figure out how much we have, and then we get to give it out.
That's great. And I know I talked about it at the last meeting, but I did attend the math night that was at Peaslee School. And I just thought from the, at first my perception, which was wrong, was it was just for Peaslee. But, when I found out that it covered all the elementary schools, K-5, all the principals were there, Greg was there, Rona Webb was there, and, you know, it was just so encompassing and so global for everybody and the enthusiasm from the kids was just phenomenal and what they were learning and what they were sharing with their parents. And as I said before, Rona Webb being there to be, you know, helping the parents to understand the program was just, it was phenomenal, it really was. And knowing that Greg Tang, yeah, he also during the day gave workshops for the teachers while some of his staff was going and working with the kids. So, it was a real combination. The kids weren't just doing, they were still involved in the math and that was really good. So, I think all these things from the STEM research and especially the literacy, but going into the math and everything is wonderful. So, thank you very much. And I still get the emails for the golden apples for the teachers.
Oh, yes. That's another, that's another one I left off the list, the golden apples.
Yeah, I know when it's, the holidays are coming or when it's time, you know, there's always an update.
Teacher appreciation.
Teacher appreciation, you know, to give the golden apple. So, that's wonderful. Thank you very much. And taking that back to all your members and your board.
I absolutely will. And I should mention too that we, last year and again this year, we have a platinum sponsor from Sullivan Christ Financial and that's, you know, a big part of all these great ideas that we were able to support was, was through her generosity. So, that's very much appreciated.
Thank you.
Great, thank you so much.
Thank you.
So, I believe what we're going to do on the agenda, if we could, if we could move number three, Peaslee School Improvement Plan and PTO Presentation up one, and the K-12 will study after that. Peaslee School Improvement, my name is PTO Presentation. These are the next items.
and her co-chair, Lindsay Musa. They are incredibly supportive and active at Peaslee School and they have a nice presentation to share with you tonight about, some more specifics about what they're doing to support us at school.
So, thank you for having us. We're excited to share with you what we're doing at Peaslee this year. This is a list of our current board members. Like Dr. Barnhart said, Lindsay and I are co-chairing. We have Jessica Naltz and Gretchen Muffley are co-chairing the communications part of it. Carolyn Blanchett is still our treasurer and we have some new members. Megan Rosetti is focusing on hospitality and fundraising. Jen Lipton is our yearbook editor and fifth grade fundraising. And then obviously, Dr. Barnhart sits on the board with us and we have two teachers, one from lower wing, Carrie Tuitt, and one from upper wing, Andy Donay. This year, our budget is about 19,500. Most of that goes towards enrichment programs for all of the grades, almost half of it at 7,500. Field trips and buses is about 2,000. Grants and reimbursements around 4,000. Classroom supplies for the teachers, 2,500. Library support at 1,000. Some miscellaneous money. Spirit is 1,000 and teacher appreciation events about 1,000. This is a little one-page flyer that our treasurer put together for the parents. Last year, we raised over $21,000 for Peaslee. That was in part due to our Wizards fundraiser, which brought in a good amount of money in April. Most of our successful fundraisers include the Kids Fair, Square One Art, the Shop With Scripts program, which is our gift card orders, and Box Tops. And then last year, we brought the Harlem Wizards to town and that event alone raised over $6,000. Just to recap, we had the Wizards come on April 12th last year. We had teacher representation from all five schools, the four elementary schools and middle school. Christine and Greg both were on our team. We actually had Katrina Ireland, who's the children's librarian at Northborough Public Library, was also on our team. So, we raised 6,300 for Peaslee and then Z. Lincoln, Proctor, and Melikin also earned a portion of money for their participation in the event. People are asking when we're going to do it again. I'll leave that up to you. This year, our fundraising goal is 17,000, which is pretty much in line with what we normally do. We've just had our Kids Fair back in November on the 16th and that raised, we don't have the final numbers yet, but about $7,400. We just sent home this week our order forms for Shop With Scripts, which is gift card orders. We usually do that twice a year, in December and in June. We also did the Square One Art project this year and those orders should be coming in soon, along with spirit wear, usually twice a year. We're hoping to maybe do a fun run this year in the spring. Box Tops, we usually raise about $600 a year from our Box Tops collections. Restaurant Nights, we just had one in October at Casa Vierta and that raised $700. We started again this year doing the celebration books. So, parents are able to order every other month a book for their child that gets donated to the library and there's a plaque inside with the child's name and what they're celebrating and it gets presented to the child in their library class. We have an Amazon Smile account for Peaslee, so parents can use our link to shop on Amazon and same with Shutterfly, the textile bin, and then direct donations. New this year, something we tried, typically when we're reaching out to businesses to support our Kids Fair and looking for donations for the silent auction, we get some businesses that just give us a cash donation. So, this year, we, instead of having businesses just support us for the Kids Fair, we reached out to a small number of businesses to see if they would support the PTO for the school year. So, we reached out to just a handful of local companies and we got a pretty good response. We raised a little over $2,000 and in return, we put their logos on the PTO newsletter, our PTO email template, we thanked them on our Facebook page and things like that. The idea kind of came that we saw businesses support sports teams and, you know, their logos go on the back of the T-shirts, so we thought we could do the same thing and they would support us for the year. So, I think definitely something we will continue to do. We had two levels of sponsorship. Gold was $500 donation and silver was $250. Our enrichment programs are coordinated by Sue Bashes and they've already started this year. The kids are enjoying them. We've had Historical Perspectives, Clara Barton, Discovery Museum, I was actually at an enrichment program this morning. Discovery Museum came in and did one on matter. The kids really enjoyed it. We're going to have an author visit on March 27th. David Badritzky is going to come in and do two presentations for upper wing and lower wing. Concord Museum, Boggs, Zoo New England. And new this year, we're going to send the fourth and fifth graders to Gillette Stadium. They're going to do, they do STEM projects there with the kids. So, the one they're going to do is on brain injuries and helmet design. So, the kids will actually make their own helmets and test them. So, that's coming up, I think in February.
And that builds on the program that we had last year.
Yep.
On brain injuries and the.
Safety, wearing helmets.
Right.
Field trips, grants and reimbursements. So, the PTO covers the cost of buses for field trips so that those additional funds are not put onto the parents. We actually increased this amount this year by $100 for each grade because we were hearing that the cost of buses was higher and we had to use different company. So, that was just increased. Some grants that we recently approved were sensory tools for a second grade classroom. We recently purchased 10 new iPads with a charging station. We put together two indoor recess carts. Kind of a picture of them, stocked with all kinds of games and activities that the kids can pull out and take to the classroom when they have indoor recess. Steam Night funding and summer slide bags. Some children were identified as needing, you know, reading material and such over the summer, so we put together, gave them the funds to put together bags that they would take home over the summer to continue with reading. And then also classroom supplies for the teachers, which was also increased this year to $125. And we know they spend way more than that. School spirit and community. We did a Welcome Back Ice Cream Social in September, participated in the Apple Fest Parade. We're hoping to possibly do a game night this winter for the families. Every month, we have a spirit day and usually do a food pantry collection for Northborough Food Pantry. We're trying to work now on putting together a mom's night out, possibly at Release Day Spa, a night about relaxation and, so hopefully that will get put together. We are having a Peaslee Night at the Railers in January and a Peaslee Night at the Bravehearts this spring. We've also talked about having a Peaslee Crew for Town Cleanup Day in Northborough to clean around the school and our playgrounds and such. And then we usually do an End of the Year Party in June. Teacher appreciation. This is some pictures from our Welcome Back Breakfast we usually do the day before school starts. This year, we set up a back-to-school shopping for the teachers. We purchased folders and binders and markers, crayons, glue, and red tote bags for them to all stock up with whatever they needed. We usually do recovery lunch or breakfast after parent conferences, holiday treats, and then events during Teacher Appreciation Week. Communication with our parents, we typically do through emails on MySchoolAnywhere, which is the website we use, on our Facebook page. We have a monthly newsletter, The Paw Print, that we send out once a month that just highlights what's going on with save the dates, fundraising, spirit events. And then new this year, we started what we call the Sunday Scramble. So, every Sunday, we send out just a quick one-pager. It lists Monday through Friday and kind of whatever they need to do to get through that week. So, that's been really positive. And that's it. Any questions?
Can I attend the spa night?
Yes.
That opened for everybody. We're just.
Yes, we're hoping. Lindsay was working with them on it and we're hoping that it works out, that we can do something there with them. We'll keep you posted.
Again, just thank you very much for everything that you do. I had the honor of attending your meeting last month and having the teacher representative who's here tonight. I think I saw her. Okay, over there. And just the cooperation that I saw as a former educator between the parents and the teacher and listening to, you know, their needs and choose bringing up from her faculty was just, was phenomenal. It really, really was. And you're there to help to support them in so many ways. And even some of the enrichment programs that you have, which you're tying into the curriculum, you're talking about the thing with the matter and also the topic that's, can't get away from it no matter what newspaper you're in about the concussion and what we're doing even under the Superintendent Johnson's leadership with the concussion up in the high school with the athletic director. And knowing that the kids are going to do that with, tie, start at the lower level, but they're going to be looking at the helmets and how to make them safe and I think they're going to be thrilled just going to Gillette Stadium. You know, can we go to that one too?
Yes.
We'll be chevrons. Is wonderful because, I mean, helmets is necessary for the, no matter what sport that they're playing or even just being outside, kids being kids and on their bicycles, you know, and it's, it's nice to see that it is an in thing to be reading, to doing a helmet if the kids understand the science behind it and you have no idea whether that's going to spark interest. So, I think the things that you're doing by even doing the buses and knowing that you're doing the field trips and it's $15,000, what you guys are doing is helping us when we have to do the budget. You know, we're not back to the times when we're two-digit, allowed to increase versus we're in the lower, you know, five and below, maybe three, you know, and not even five. And it just helps us so much and even with the taxpayers. And another thing I'd like to applaud, all the K-5 PTOs, is that the money that you raise stays in the school and it stays there. And I think what you're able to do for the faculty and to welcome them back and to have like a recovery breakfast after, you know, parent conferences and just starting out and giving them things because teachers spend so much money of their own for the classroom. It's phenomenal and I just applaud all the PTOs here in Northborough, but thank you for all your work that you've done. It's really wonderful.
Thank you so much.
Erin, is this yours? Is this yours? It's Michelle's. It's Michelle's. Trying to give away her laptop. So, we'll be moving right on to Peaslee School, School Improvement. Alrighty. So, the first thing I want to mention is that we are very, very fortunate to have such a wonderful and supportive PTO and that is just one example of the parent support that we have at Peaslee School. We are very excited to share with you an update on the School Improvement Plan and this year, we have some new members who have joined us and the school council for Peaslee School happens to be, most of them are in the audience. So, we have parents Rebecca Kachuk and Jeff Care who have joined us this year. And Ariel Greenspan is a Grade Two teacher, also a member of the Peaslee School Council. So, I thank them for being here and I mentioned to them that if they hear me leave something out or they think of something they would like to add, they can just chime in at any time. So, what we want to do is just give you a quick glimpse of where we've been and where we're going. In the past, we have had numerous school improvement plans and they have built a nice solid foundation for us to work from. So, we've done a lot with curriculum and school safety planning, reading, writing, and math workshops. So, we've taken all of that good work and now we're working on enhancing that. So, the overarching goals were effective use of data and social and emotional learning. So, the first goal, the effective use of data, basically states that we will engage in the systematic collection and collaborative analysis of data to inform and enhance instruction. So, I always love to have pictures in these. So, each, each week, our teachers have a professional learning community period of time, which is about a 40-minute block during which a grade level can get together and look at whatever assessment results are current. So, we use this time to look at our literacy assessment benchmarks, we look at math topic tests, we look at our MCAS scores, and we look at student work. So, this is very useful time when teachers can sit down and really focus in on whether we are assessing what we're teaching and how useful those assessments are and what we can identify if any children need additional instruction or interventions in any area. And then we also use this to just solidify and create consistency in our instruction. Another use of that PLC time and using the assessment data is to create flexible groups for students for their instruction. This year, we are fortunate enough to have a situation in which we are able to be really flexible and we are shifting students from one classroom to another when we realize that there might be a group of students who are working with their classroom teacher and we have some co-teaching with a special education teacher or the English Language Development teacher in a particular room. If we identify for a particular topic that there are children in another classroom that could maybe use that extra support, we might shift them into that room just for that period of time for math, for example. We might take some children that are moving along a little bit quicker or maybe are a little more comfortable in that particular topic and move them to another room where the pace might be a little bit more quick or there might be more independent opportunities. So, those are things that we are using to make decisions about student grouping. And really, when we look overall at professional learning communities, the value is in creating individualized and personalized instruction and in that collaboration time for teachers to really get together and hone in and spend uninterrupted time on creating consistency within their grade levels. So, we'll shift now to our second goal, which focuses on emphasizing social and emotional learning to foster a culture of ownership for learning, resilience, and inclusiveness. Through the implementation of a school-wide social-emotional learning curriculum, students will develop a repertoire of social skills and self-regulation strategies. So, we're really looking at helping children, in a sense, develop skills and coping strategies. So, when we look at ownership for learning, we think about all the benefits of children having ownership for what they're learning, where children have the opportunity to make choices about how they might pursue a particular assignment or how they might complete a project or even sometimes within certain choices, they might choose what they want to learn. So, this kind of ownership really leads children to develop some critical thinking skills. It leads them to become problem solvers. It lends its self to children, being able to create a community of learners, helping each other with learning, which is really interesting. So, some of the innovative ideas that we've had and implemented recently to promote student ownership of learning are things like our Maker Space, EdCamp Junior, and the STEM problem-solving activities that we have been incorporating into our daily problem solving. And this really, the main outcome of this is that we build students' enthusiasm and love for learning. Then, to tie this into theory, John Dewey was a very famous philosopher and he wrote quite a bit about education in the early 1900s, but his work is still very relevant today. And I have a quote from him that I wanted to mention to you. So, John Dewey said, "Give pupils something to do, not something to learn. And the doing is of such a nature as to demand thinking or the intentional noting of connections. Learning naturally results." So, if we give children engaging things to do, engaging projects and engaging work to do, the kinds of projects and work that make them think, that make them note things and notice things, they. notice things, they become much stronger learners and they develop more of that ownership for learning. And you can see here, we have a young man who was building one of the projects in one of our STEM challenges. So another piece of social-emotional learning is we are using literature to launch conversations about social skills and themes like perseverance and responsibility and kindness and collaboration and communication and problem solving. And this particular photograph is a picture of a young man who was an Algonquin Regional High School student. And as part of our Community Reading Day, he came and he read a story to the students and he talked about the themes in that story. And the conversation that occurred afterwards was so rich and the questions the children were asking were so relevant and so meaningful. And the young man was delighted and all of the readers were delighted because the children were really fascinated about what do you do in high school and what will we be doing when we get to high school? So it was really a nice, almost cross-generational connection. And, you know, children idolize these high school kids. And to hear a high school student, they were student athletes, who came in and talked about the importance of being kind and developing these social skills was really made a nice connection for the children. So another area that we're working on is building resilience. So we all know that there are many days when students, just like adults, are faced with uncertainty or anxiety. And we are exploring ways for children to develop that capacity to recover quickly when something unexpected or challenging happens and really looking at, you know, how can you have that thumbs up even after you might have had a tough experience? So we're really looking at what are those things that we can do, what are the programs we can use? And I know I've spoken with you before about the zones of regulation and social thinking and second step. So really bringing those much more into our daily routines rather than just saving them for times when we have difficulty, so building those internal skills. So here's just some of our youngest students enjoying their learning and letting me know that they are strong learners. And then, of course, if you're having a tough day or you just need a hug, there's Ruby, our school service dog who comes to school and children just delight in connecting with her, giving her a hug, giving her a quick pat. So then, as I mentioned in our goal, one of the most important things we're doing is to create an inclusive culture. We want children to recognize that everybody in our school community has value and everybody is welcome. And it's really important to explore children's strengths and needs and talents and what they can bring to us and what kinds of leadership skills they can, they can come with or that they can build while they're with us, looking for resources and strategies to identify those skills and talents. And as we continue to explore materials, we are also continuing to help students recognize the value of belonging to a learning community and of including everybody around them in that learning community. One of the things I like to say to children is, you know, we're a small school, we're Peaslee. When you are in fifth grade, you are working with a group of children that you may have spent five or six years with. When you go to the middle school, you're going to be in a much larger community and the children that are going to bring you comfort, the children that you can rely on are the ones that you know, that are coming with you from Peaslee, the ones that you know from your sports and your activities in town, as you get to know all of those other children. It's really important to know that you have strong ties with those peers from Peaslee So I want to wrap this up by kind of highlighting the fact that a lot of what we're doing happens in our professional learning communities. And in the PLC literature, there is a slogan that is often used to sum up the value of professional learning communities. And that slogan is "Whatever It Takes." And typically, when you think about professional learning communities, especially in the beginning when they were first coming to be, that really referred to doing whatever it takes to help children succeed academically. And we know that it's not just the academics, but it's also those social skills, that sense of confidence, that sense of being a learner and knowing what it means to be a learner. And at Peaslee School, this really extends to all aspects of children's school experience. And I wanted to end with a photo that shows a teacher who understands that you do whatever it takes to help children have a good experience. And sometimes that experience means just being able to get in to the school building or get onto your bus even when it is practically a hurricane outside. So this is a picture of Ms. Miranda, our third grade teacher, who diligently does bus duty with us every day. And this is her with her inside-out umbrella and I can tell you, she was soaking wet from head to foot despite the layers of things that she had on. And just one fine example of doing whatever it takes at Peaslee School. So that is our presentation for night. Do you have any questions for me or for our members of our school council?
I just had a couple of questions.
Sure.
So one of the questions was about the grade level. So for the flexible instruction groups, is that for all grades or just certain grades? And then also the high school students who come to read to the kids, was that just specific grades or?
Okay. So for the flexible grouping, it's open to all grades to consider. Right now, I think we probably have only one or two that are doing that right now. I think people are waiting to see how successful it is. And then there's also to, a need to communicate with parents about that and making sure that parents feel comfortable about it. But it is definitely something that we are exploring at different grade levels. And then for the Community Reading Day, that was K through five. So we had enough readers from the high school and I have to give them credit. They came over one afternoon after school, yeah, I think we had 15, 16 high school students. They came and they met with the two teachers, Mrs. Kelsey and Mrs. Shields, who spearheaded this event. They were introduced to what this would look like, they received the books, they, you know, understood what the themes were, what we were looking for them to do. And then they all came back on the actual Community Reading Day, which was in November. And every classroom had at least one reader. Some of the students came as a double and they came together and read together. And it was delightful. And the high school students, I think, benefited just as much as the elementary students did. I don't know, Mrs. Greenspan and Mrs. Donay are here in the audience. I don't know if you want to have any detail or anything that you want to say about that day?
Because we're in the top of the high school students, for sure. They obviously just love us, listening. We had a male athlete and a female athlete and there were so many questions and they loved the book. It was a great experience.
Any other comments? I'd like to thank you for the presentation and, you know, also just focusing on, you know, your two goals, which are large goals and so much falls underneath it. I'd also like to thank the members of your council that are here tonight, the teachers that are giving up more time, that they don't even have time, and also the parents, because I think they're a vital part of the school councils that were enacted with the Ed Reform Act of 1993. I was just concerned, have you reached out for your school council to have a community member? Because sometimes that can be one of a valuable piece, you know, when you're trying to do fundraising or something like that. So we've just, we've had a community representative on our council for the past three or four years, I think. And unfortunately, just this summer, we discovered that we were losing her. So we are trying to identify a new member. So if you have any leads, feel free to let me know. Okay. Can I, may I continue?
Yes.
Going to definitely the school improvement goal number one, the effective use of data. You talked about allowing the staff to get together one period a week. Is this your first year of doing it? Is this new or how many years have you been doing that? This is our second year. Second year. With PLCs, yes. And then we also use some faculty meeting time because we want all teachers to be involved in that MCAS data analysis. So this year, we broke it up a little bit differently from the way that we've done it in the past because we've been building, you know, this is my sixth round of MCAS with Peaslee School teachers. And I think each year, we've maybe revised our approach. You know, we had to start in a particular place six years ago, you know, it was still a little bit new. So we've really, I think, matured in our way. It evolves over time. So this year, what we did was we looked at, help me out here, was it the math that we did together? No, the ELA that we did in, we did ELA in faculty meeting. So our music library, phys ed, everybody was involved in analyzing the math data. So we go through and we look at the strengths, the weaknesses, we have a cutoff point, we look at to see, you know, what percentage of students did well on this question, you know, what percentage didn't do well, what are the questions where we had 80% or more and what are the questions where we're closer to like 70 to 80 and where are we below that? And we really identify, you know, strengths and weaknesses and what are some things that we can do right away to address some of those things. And then for the math, we did that through the PLCs with the math coordinator Maggie McGinty. We did that more in the grade levels and really honed in on very specific areas of math that we could work on. And I think that's very valuable is that you're giving time, even faculty time, because I think teachers never have enough time to collaborate with each other. If you give them, if you give them an hour, they'll need two hours, you give them two hours, they'll need three hours. I mean, it's just because you don't want the data just to sit there and not to analyze it or not to look at it. And especially, you talked about the MCAS, but I'm sure there's others, you talked about the literacy assessment. Yes, we have a whole literacy assessment calendar for the year and that, so that's our benchmarking. So we have a variety of assignments, of assessments that are done at each grade level. So once those are done, then we go into the spreadsheet and we analyze where we are with that, look to see how do we make those flexible groups? Are there children who might need some additional interventions? Are there children who might need to see the remedial reading teacher? And then we have our math topic tests. So that's really our focus right now is the math and the ELA. And then teacher groups, they can also use a PLC if they want to look at. I know recently, we were having a conversation about the social studies test and how can we modify that and, you know, how do we look at that? So that's definitely something we do. And I have to say that we are very fortunate to work in a district that supports that PLC time and allows for that in our schedules. And then my last comment is that I think that's very important to do, especially, you know, you're talking about like looking at the data, but then also doing a response to intervention by, you know, even shifting students among classrooms, you know, close by, only for a short time. I always would call it like a Band-Aid approach. Because if you can catch a student early enough that just may have, I can think of myself, I couldn't understand angles at first. I still remember that, you know, with the cube before an obtuse, I didn't get that at all. When I got it, I got it, you know what I mean? But if that wasn't identified soon enough, that whole thing could have just mushroomed into something much larger where, once I understood it, I could apply it in anything. So I applaud you for doing that and to, it's hard, especially for the teachers. It's a lot of time, it's a lot consuming, looking at all the different data, the sources, and the collaboration time. But I think in the long run, we can identify problems sooner before they grow up to be something a lot larger. So I applaud you in that. The other benefit, too, to that is we can also identify children who are a little bit above, you know, where we expect for their grade level and we can enhance their instruction, give them, you know, digging deeper into different topics and allowing them to grow because they also need to be challenged and need to have that opportunity to develop their own learning, even though it might be a little bit advanced in a particular area or a particular topic. So we can do that, too. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Is her presentation on the screen? I just don't want to go back.
So the next item on the agenda is the K-12 World Language Study. Correct. So Madam Chair, I think this is a double presentation for Rota. Weaved artistically into one presentation. Rota Webb is our English Language Director and annually presents on the current enrollment status of our EL students, but also programming and the assessments that are often mandated by the partners, elementary and secondary education. As we know, over a number of years that we've actually been monitoring our student population, increasing our EL support, our student population has grown from 32 to 156. And so that requires additional supports and certainly someone who is incredibly mindful of what those supports should be. And we're very happy to have Rota with us in the district. Tonight, in addition to her annual presentation, she will also be highlighting some results of a district-wide K-12 World Language Study Group that was formed last year at the request of some staff, administrators, parents within our greater community. Rota served as the representative on this committee on behalf of the district. And so no better person perhaps to summarize the World Language Study survey than the study group's results than Rota. And also, I think Rota will also be giving us an update on the Byler C. Seale that we're working on as well. So a lot of good information to be shared.
So good evening and thank you for the opportunity to share this information with you tonight. I will start with the update for the English Language Education Program. And with the definition of an English learner, the state definition is a student who is exposed to a language other than English and cannot do ordinary work in the classroom in English. Of course, this is a lot more involved than that definition that seems so simple. In Massachusetts, we're supposed to have an identified program for students who are considered English learners. And in our district, we have, as in most of Massachusetts, structured English immersion, which is composed by two parts. The English Language Development taught by an ESL teacher who has a license in ESL and the content teachers who are taught, who have to be SCI endorsed, so structured English immersion, that part of the retail initiative, which I'll explain and give an update in just a few minutes. So it's part of, in K through five, it's the classroom teacher and the ELD teacher. And of course, our special education teachers also have the endorsement. And for the middle school, it is our content area teachers who are teaching English learners from Level Three and up. If we take a look at the trend that we have in our district, we continue to grow in the, if we look at since, we've been keeping data since 2004. And at this point, we have 91 English learners in our district. We, at least 24 of those students are new to us and qualifying at the beginning levels of English Language Development, so they're newcomers. Of course, we have reclassified students and the purple bar, the dark purple bar are the English learners, the light purple bar are the students whom we have reclassified and we have to monitor for four years to ensure that the children continue to grow in their language and make progress in their learning throughout our schooling, throughout our different schools. So for a total of 165 students. What is very important and what we pay a lot of attention to in our district is working with every family that is new to our district because we want to get to know through the family about their child, their exposure to languages, how the families use the languages in their home and in the community, the mobility the family may have had, educational background, the strengths that the family has and especially the child. We don't want to waste any time in working with our children and this is very important. The culture and how each family is, views, culture and explain it to us. Instead of thinking of stereotypes, we ask the family, you know, what is important to them, what are their values, what is their participation in the community? So that we can learn as well because the amount of languages and cultures that we have in our district, we can be enhanced and enriched by our families and sharing that information with us. If we look at the second page where the home languages are outlined, if we look at pre-K through grade eight, there are currently, in the program, we've got 23 different languages, a little bit, four languages less than last year, but you'll see an English. But you'll see an increase in the amount of speakers in, in the different languages. And something that is very important to highlight here, if we look at our preschool and the amount of languages that we have, from forty-six Northboro school, children that we have in our preschool, twenty-six students are exposed to another language, for a total of twenty-one languages. So our prevalent languages in Northboro are Portuguese, followed by Spanish, Arabic, and Chinese. And then you can see how diverse we are with families coming from all over the world. The third graph that you will find are the language proficiency levels. Of course, this data is frozen in time to be able to analyze it. But fifty percent of our students are now at the foundational level. Foundational level is defined from Level One, meaning having no English at all, or at the word level, to a Level Three, a Low Three, which is really speaking at a simple sentence level, like subject verb and at that level. If you look at the bridging level there, the students, it's usually language proficiency at the compound complex level of a sentence. Of course, we're looking at the four language domains, listening, speaking, reading, and writing. So this, having fifty percent of our students right now at the newcomer level, it is resource intensive. It takes a lot of skill and the quality of our teachers to be able to, for our students to be able to learn English with depth and move them along the continuum. And every child will learn according to their background. There's no, there's no formula of what is going to work. Every child is different. That's why we need to understand who each, each child is to be able to work very efficiently with them. At this point, what we are doing as well in the education of our students is make sure that we are looking at every aspect. So the retail initiative, which started in, for Northboro in two thousand and four, which, two thousand and thirteen, sorry, our teachers, now we have a hundred and seventeen teachers who are endorsed in Northboro K through eight. This is very important because it has given teachers the skills to be, and strategies to be able to work with students in the classroom and in the subject areas. And the endorsement includes special education. So for many years, and Marie Allen is in the audience, we have worked a lot with special education and understanding our children because we need to understand the different factors and how the intersection of language acquisition and possible disabilities or not, to be able to, if we diagnose a child with a learning disability, that it is actually that and it's not because the child is learning the language. So we continue to work and collaborate, collaborate and in, in all aspects of special education. The other thing that we have put in place for the newcomers, especially at Malacan, is an after-school program out of our Title III, which allows for supplemental programming for our English learners. So twice a week, we have a, an after-school program just for our English learners. And I've already reported of the summer program, and that is also coming from Title III. So we offer children to continue to learn English in the summer. And another thing that has come from going to professional development and learning about cultural responsive teaching is that we have a group of teachers, this is teacher-led, who are designing professional development around cultural responsive teaching, which is so important for all of us to, to grow in that area. We work very closely with our families and that's why we spend a lot of time talking to each of our families because they can provide us a wealth of knowledge. For adults that are wanting to learn English, we do have resources of all the adult ESL classes in our areas and offer them that. Our Northboro Library with the conversation, conversational circles that they have and our International Night, which happens in the spring. Part of this of learning languages is also, our English learners are adding another language by learning English, but we have given an update of the SEAL of Bilingual C, which gives the opportunity at the high school level of all students being able to graduate, those who participate in it, with a SEAL of Bilingual C, which means if it's an English learner achieving an intermediate high level of English or an English speaker achieving an intermediate high level of another language, to graduate with a SEAL on their diploma. The state is, will be coming out with guidance shortly. So we will be launching this the following school year, once we see the guidance coming out from the state. However, this year in eighth grade, the group that is getting together to talk about the SEAL of Bilingual C is comprised by world language teachers from the, both middle schools, Malacan and Trotier, and the high school. So at the great, eighth grade level, what will happen this year in the spring is to be, to give a language proficiency assessment to all of our eighth grade students in listening, speaking, reading, and writing, which will give good data baseline for our teachers here and good information for our students as they move into the high school. And as we look then to launching the SEAL the next year for our students in, in the upper grades at Algonquin. So that is the day, the, the update for the SEAL of Bilingual C. Another aspect, world languages, the world language that Christine mentioned in our K-12 study group, and Alana Seer was a part of that year-long study, so please chime in if there's something that I leave out. So the purpose of the study group was to look at what is research saying about learning another language? What are the benefits of students being exposed to other languages? What does world languages look like in our district? And what other, what is the programming that exists for students to be exposed to other languages? So that is the other handout that you have. And the summary of that is, thanks. Learning another language does benefit all children. It's, it opens up our worlds to other cultures. If we become literate in another language, it makes us, makes children a lot stronger. It opens up opportunities to the global world. It also opens up job opportunities within the United States because there is a lot of need for bilingual speakers in different jobs. So when we looked at what are the programs, we needed to look, one of the things was to look at the research that is available, take a look at the programming that exists in our middle schools and high schools. And of course, at Malacan, the same as at Trotier, in sixth grade, there's an exploratory in, of languages in sixth grade, the children are, have equal amount of time to be exposed to French and to Spanish. And then in seventh and eighth grade, they choose one of the languages, either French or, or Spanish. And then they're able to be accessed advanced courses when they get to Algonquin. And Algonquin has another language that they could take, which is Latin. The type, we had to look at also types of programs that exist. And in Massachusetts, there are basically three different kinds of programs. And it all has, depends on the amount of exposure, the time that the children are exposed to another language. So the FLEX program, for example, is up to five percent of the instructional time. That means once or twice a week, whether it's embedded in the school day or before or after school. The FLEX program, which is foreign language in elementary schools, is from five percent to fifty percent of the time. And then there are immersion programs, fifty percent to a hundred percent of the school So the outcome of the year-long study was that what we're going to do this year is just take a look, go and visit other districts, just see what that looks like. Because we didn't get to visit any other schools. And so this is what will be happening later on in the spring.
Did I leave anything out? Any comments? Questions from the chair? Thank you for your presentation. Thank you for all the time that you give. I didn't, like, I mentioned it last month, it, just the math thing that happened at Peaslee. I was surprised that you were there, but it was so vital and so valuable for the parents, for you to be there. I only have one question on the World Language Study. What other schools in the area have something that you'd be looking at? Have you identified any?
We haven't identified the schools yet that I'm aware of. So that's something that we will be next to.
Okay. And then I just have three through the chair. Going on, talking about English Language Learners and the failed population. I missed the number of teachers K to eight that have the SCI endorsement.
A hundred and seventeen.
A hundred and seventeen. And that's across all disciplines too, right?
Yes.
Across all disciplines. Okay.
Well, it's specific, sorry. I, I would need to define what a, a core academic teacher by, according to this initiative. So it's special education teachers, classroom teachers, English teachers, math, history, science, government, and civics, social studies. I think I've covered that, yes. So it doesn't mean absolutely every single teacher, and that had to do with funding actually. But it is a federal mandate, so it's certain content teachers, not all of them.
Not all of them, okay.
Yeah.
And it depended if they had English Language Learners in our classroom?
That's correct.
Wasn't it also?
Yes.
Okay.
So the mandate now is any, any teacher who has an English learner must get to have the endorsement.
Okay. And I know how well you are connected with the parents. And just to connect from the Peaslee PTO, because they talked, the chairs talked about the Sunday night, they sent home that one slip of pa, I don't know if it goes through the emails? Okay.
Emailed.
Emailed. But if we have these languages that are home languages, that are not in English, is, is that going home to those parents? I want to give you more work, but are we communicating with those parents or so that they know what's going on? I'm just trying to think of when I went to, you know, went to France and didn't speak French. I had a big problem, right? So I can imagine what the parents hear if they're not speaking English. You know, you want to have them to be connected, in which you're doing a great job, but are we taking some of those notices going home and are they being translated in for their parents?
So that's a very good question. So we provide interpreters for parent conferences and meetings like the math meeting that you were at, where our parents can be. Every single paper that goes home is untranslated. Many of the emails can be put into Google Translate and that can be, so Spanish and Portuguese, they're pretty good, but not everything. But documents, official documents that have to do with a child's progress report, anything that has to do with special education, report cards, all those are translated for the parents. And so when there are important meetings and that, that are taking place, we are making sure that we have a list of all the families who have requested translation, that those families are informed.
And that, thank you, because that was another follow-up question, is when you have parent-teacher conferences or you have, you know, IEP meetings or any kind of that assessments, do you reach out to those parents, the communication, to see if they want to have a translator there for them?
So for every parent who needs an interpreter, we have a list. We reach out, for parent conferences, the families that need interpreters, every conference is pre-booked. So the families are guaranteed that they will have an interpreter and have a meeting with a parent. And for special education also, every family that requests translations or interpretations, we are pre-scheduling all that and translating all the reports for the parents. So we are reaching out to the parents. We're not waiting for parents to reach out to us because we know the level of need every family has.
Okay. And last comment is, I'd just like to applaud the administration, you, Rhoda, and your staff, along with administration, because this is just showing how much of a global community we are and we have to, and we are working together to make it inclusive for everybody. So thank you to administration on both sides here and also to the public for all the funding because it's a lot different than when I myself was in the classroom. So thank you very much because I think it's very important that we keep everybody connected. And I think that's why we have such a good school district that we do, an excellent school district. Thank you. Thank you to everybody.
I just want to say, it's just so funny that this is on the agenda tonight, so because just earlier tonight, I was talking to a friend who lives in a neighboring town and her daughter's starting French lessons, after-school program, after-school kindergarten, you know? So I'd love to get something like that implemented in Northboro too, to see what we can bring in for teaching and things like that, for all grade levels.
Next item on the agenda is program review overview. I'm going to turn this over to Assistant Superintendent Martineau. He's been spearheading the impending visit of the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education for pretty much the second time in two years. We just completed, under Marie Allen's guidance, the Coordinated Program Review Audit, which focused on Student Support Services. So this is an exciting opportunity for us to access some of the resources that the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education has to offer. And that is one of the purposes of this. I know I'm stealing your thunder. Yeah, I can see you're looking at it. I'll just stop. And Greg, you can just take it from there.
You can steal my thunder.
I know. It's all right.
So the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education is required by Mass. General Law to review districts across the Commonwealth. Their target is forty per year. This year, they select, randomly selected fifteen districts to review, and we were one of the fifteen. The review consists of five different components. The first component is a self-assessment. So we evaluate how we think we're doing. That self-assessment is submitted to the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. They then give that to a visiting team, who will then review that, that information. We also are required to do a paper documentation collection and provide the department with that. So they do a paper audit. And then the third component is they will visit us for three days in January and have a visiting team spend three days onsite observing, interviewing, talking about the work we do. And from those three components, they will draft a report. That report will come back to us and we'll have an opportunity to provide feedback. And then finally, that report will be given to us so we can use that data to continue to grow and improve in our operations. It's a little bit different than our coordinated program review, where that was a compliance audit. This is about a value-add service the department is providing districts. We are not required to implement any of the recommendations that the convening committee provides us. Rather, it's to give another lens to our work, another set of data that we can add as we look to improve our system. And we're really looking at it as an opportunity as Vision 2020 is coming to a close in the next year. And we'll have an opportunity to add this data and this report to our evaluation of our program as we re-author our next strategic plan. So we're looking forward to the visit and more information will be presented as the process unfolds.
So which schools are visi, this is for Northboro and Southboro?
This is for our district, all ten schools, so all three districts.
And they'll be visiting all the schools?
All ten, ten schools.
Oh, wow. And when do we receive the feedback from that?
Usually it's three to four months after their, their site visit. The report is released, so.
Do, do you get to select the classrooms and the buildings that you want to go to or is it a surprise visit?
So we actually were just assigned a liaison from the department and we're working out those details. Because there are ten schools that this committee has to visit in a short window, they won't be able to visit all schools. So we'll be in conversation around what that looks like. You know, and we'll be working closely with the principals to decide which classrooms they visit. But it's supposed to be random.
It is supposed to be random. So do you try to have them see a cross-section of maybe like a literacy, like an ELL classroom, maybe science, or what?
So I think they actually provide a pretty prescriptive schedule. And the way they work is that their visits across ten of our schools, they're expecting to see a variety of content and instruction practices. So across our ten schools, the likelihood that all contents will be, will be being taught at some time during their visits is highly likely. at some time during their visits is highly likely.
And the last one. Is it just an observation they do, or do they also ask to speak to a group of teachers or parents involved into this? Is school committee involved into this, or what?
So they, in addition to the observations, they will be speaking with principals, teachers, parents, school committee members, central office staff. So it's a very comprehensive review. And right now, we're working on the details of that schedule, and we will be communicating that schedule shortly.
One extra's last. Connecting in what Peaslee talked about, looking at the data, I, again, even the administration looking at the data, even though we're getting, you're going to be getting this document, you're going to be analyzing the data, looking at it, and then helping to do the next strategic plan that we're going to be doing. So, I mean, that shows you that it's valuable and vital data that we'll be getting, so thank you.
They were quite surprised to find that we were actually three districts. So one of the things that they're required-
They found that out after the fact?
They did, and they were able to check three boxes, because one of the things that they're required to do in, through any one of its yearly or annual visits to the prescribed number of schools is to visit regional schools, visit vocational schools, and to visit, you know, different configurations of comprehensive schools. So in the conversation, they found that we were actually three districts, separate districts. They were able to be a little bit more excited because they had to visit each one of those as well. So we're looking forward to it. And for us, it's perfect timing because it does give us some great feedback for the strategic planning process, which will really begin anew next year or the year after.
No old business at this time. Starting with the FY nineteen monthly-
Monthly general fund expenditure report is in your packet as of November thirtieth, and as customary fashion, we ask for a vote to approve until audited. I do want to mention a few things after we can have that conversation before you vote, or I will give you a foreshadowing of next month's expenditure report, which will reflect some of the mold mitigation costs. To what extent at this point, we're still in conversations with the town. We did just receive the report from our environmental testing agency last week, and John Cudair and myself have been reviewing this with Tom Maitler to see if and what we may be able to submit to the insurance company for recovery. That is, in fact, what we've been waiting for, and, you know, we're anxious to see what, if anything, will be covered by the insurance company. But in conversations with John, it's become clear that with the reserves in the accounts that the town would normally access to cover unexpected expenditures of this nature, there will be some expenditures from the operational budget as well, which will drive the no variance line conversation that we usually have, no significant variance from previous month. We'll be revisiting that next month as well, because there will be a significant variance in one of the line items. And as we know, most likely, it will be from the building maintenance account at the prescribed schools where the mitigation occurred. And as always, when we look at a budget, we look at line items, but in true expenditure fashion, we balance to the bottom line. And so at this point, doing a thorough analysis of the budget, I'm not looking at freezing any line items. I know that's something that the school committee asks, but it will be, you know, something that we're going to be very watchful over as we continue to expend this budget.
What line item would that be?
Building maintenance, Procter, building maintenance, Malacan.
Is there a number?
Yep, it's in the-
Page eight.
Forty-four thousand function code series. So it will be paid eight.
Oh, got it. I was on the-
And the building maintenance is, they're both under the forty-two-twenty account function code. You'll note that Procter is already over-expended, but that is by no means Alana Seer as principals doing. We did have the water heater replacement, and we did replace all of the shades at Procter School. So that is reflected in some of that line.
Are all the shades in?
Mm-hmm.
Anyone's here?
Mm-hmm. So that's where we are with that process. And interestingly enough, Rhoda was mentioning the translation services. That does, and she does, a masterful job of trying to provide translation for all, for all of our students as needed. And because of the variety of translations that we experience from year to year, just simply by the nature of the number of languages that are represented in our community, it does present a challenge. I do know that she investigates, but first and foremost maintains a high level of integrity in terms of the interpretation, and that oftentimes requires individualized translation for some of the documents that we have. And so that is reflected in our budget and will be proposed to be increased in our FY twenty budget. And that's on bottom of page two.
Entertain our voting for this, and if you want to continue, please.
I move to approve the monthly general fund expenditure report is in November thirtieth, two thousand eighteen, until audited.
Second.
Discussion items or questions other than the-
Just on the mold, I'd like to thank Alana and all the other principals, because Andy Shur, you had to start looking with your magnifying glasses right before school began and what was going on. And I really, you know, I think that we were not the only school that was affected by mold, but I think that we've handled it very well. You had extra days off, but I think you've taken care of some of those days, right?
We have two more in March.
And two more in March. And I, you know, when you first hear of mold, I mean, it's like, you know, you think it's going to be more disruptive, but I think you handled it so very well. And, and I think the presentation that, it was in the library before the beginning of school, and I think Kelly was in attendance too. It was wonderful, and I forget the head of the-
Sue Boyle.
She did a great job in presenting it to it, and the concerns of the parents and everything like that. So I think that this, you, you did a wonderful job of handling this situation that we, for the first time encounter, and handled it very well, and still kept the continuity of school going. So thank you very much.
Ready for a, all in favor of the motion to table? Go.
Thank you. Enrollments are, updated enrollments are also in your packet. We are always mindful of our student population and our class size policy, in particular at this time of year, as we prepare for staffing for the FY twenty budget. We are very early on our preliminary budget, but still, we do have some pretty good numbers for our budget planning for FY twenty. Nancy Bissett has done an amazing job of reaching out early on, almost a month earlier, to all of those parents who were or may have experienced redistricting due to the class size policy language. And so we actually are anticipating being able to have some fairly accurate staffing models in January, which is about a month earlier. Also appreciate the work of the elementary principals who are out there preparing our kindergarten packets for our youngest members, newest members of our school community next year. Registration packets are due to go out shortly with a January ninth, tenth, and eleventh registration date, so those are ready to go and they're, they're all together. So we do have, it's also noteworthy, and I'll mention it while we're talking about registration packets, we do have our transition model to kindergarten, tuition-free kindergarten play. And while the packets are consistent with what was sent last year, we are mindful that any changes will be communicated to parents in terms of any tuition shifts that may occur because of the transitional model being implemented. And those, and that notice will go out prior to any deposits that are required to be due, which will be in May. So the principals are, we've had some conversations about what do we do if the practice has been we, our status quo until such time as we have voted and approved changes in the budget that would reflect a change in the rate structure and then the tuition. So those packets will be basically the same packets as last year, with that information being shared with parents. So I just wanted to make mention of that.
For the packets, so the packets go out, when should people, if they don't receive packets, like notify?
I'll turn this over to the principals to speak specifically.
Do you all plan to mail them on Friday?
Yep.
Okay, so if they haven't received them, please. So by next Friday, if they don't have them, then they should reach out to, is it the-
They should call to our schools. Central office.
Central office or each individual school?
Either place. The information will get back.
Okay.
Sometimes they're not sure what school to reach out to, so they'll reach out to the superintendent's office.
Does that get communicated through the town news?
It's on the websites, and it's gone to cable access.
Oh, it has.
So that's out there. Cheryl Lepre has them ready to go.
Okay.
Budget calendar is in your packet as well. Noteworthy, next Thursday, John Cudair, town administrator, is presenting his annual financial trend monitoring presentation at the library at seven o'clock. It is an amazing evening, if one is interested in the financial health and wellness of the town. And it's a very detailed report, and it does foreshadow, you know, expected revenues, expected expenditures, and, and just the health of the really well-managed town of Northborough. And the school committee is usually in, or some representation, but generally, we have a full house at that meeting.
We do.
It's a good gathering of the financial boards. And we do know that we will be attending a Saturday session with financial appropriations shortly after or before the budget is moved to town floor, which that date has not yet been set.
Who, the school committee attends that, did you say, or the?
The school committee is invited to attend the financial trend monitoring presentation and financial appropriations.
The Saturday thing?
Financial appropriations invites all the boards to attend.
Oh, okay.
And the school committee is invited to attend as well. That's where we present our budget, to the financial appropriations board. Also in your packet is the voted and approved capital improvement plan for review that's taken up into consideration as we move through the budgeting process as well. And there will be a reference to that in the preliminary budget, budget presentation this evening. And again, appreciate Tom Maitler's input on this.
I want to move on to the FY twenty preliminary budget presentation.
Joe, I hate to displace you, and I'll be coming with lots of carry-ons, I guess, they weren't moving over. Is this yours? I promise not to spread out that much.
You might need a little bit more space.
I do.
My stuff is in the way.
Here, run a slideshow on this one.
I've got like three copies.
It's a Mac. Right. Getting Mac-oriented. PC girl for some time. Marie, you may want to join us at the table also. There are a number of items that refer to student support services, and so I may defer for, to Marie for specific information. It's actually exciting to be presenting this budget tonight, because all too often, a budget comes down to numbers and sense, and what can we, what we can afford, and how are we going to make that all work? And how we make it all work is really, you know, a great reference by Dr. Barnhart. We do what it takes to make it all come together. And tonight, we had some really wonderful presentations that may not necessarily be specifically identified in the operational budget. The operational budget contains something in excess of five hundred line items, all totaling up to a final number that we will be requesting of the town to vote and appropriate. And so we, we have budget goals, those are set each and every year by the school committee in, through lots of conversations and, and feedback from our administrators and our parent community as well. But this evening is particularly celebratory because you, you listened to and heard some shining examples of what really the operational budget as voted represents and supports throughout the school year. While there may not be something specific on the budget for EL, which there happens to be this evening, but they, they might not have been, the budget supports all of the wonderful work that takes place in our schools, thankfully supported by the hard work of our PTOs, by the Northborough Ed Foundation, by the Quarter Nine Chamber that also provides grant funding to a lot of innovative programs. We seek each year to present a budget that sustains the excellence that we experience in our schools and throughout the district, but also provides areas for incremental growth in areas that we have identified are specific areas of need and/or innovative programming that we would like to see move forward. Much of the innovative programming does come from the classroom and the experience that our teachers have with our students each and every day. And we are pleased that while the operational budget cannot always support those individual initiatives and those great ideas, our PTOs and all of our community-based organizations do provide that support. So we thank, thank them for that. We also recognize that as this, these seeds begin to germinate in the classroom, that's when oftentimes they come forward to the operational budget process, which then gives us an opportunity to discuss and explore ways that we continue to have those within our district, but extend beyond just one classroom or one teacher's experience. So this budget, this evening, does provide for support of our budgetary goals that were identified by the school committee, but also a budget that sustains and maintains the high level of excellence in programming that we already enjoy in our district. This begins with a statement of vision and mission, which actually does ground our work each and every year. There needs to be a philosophy and a vision and a foundation that we build upon as we build that budget. This is something that is found in our strategic plan for each school, but is also embedded in our day-to-day practice. The budget process does actually not begin in September. It begins in July, when we start expending the newly voted and approved budget. And early on, we begin having conversations about how we're expending that budget and ways in which we can incorporate that into the next fiscal year. In September, we do sit together, and we review our prior year's budget goals, and we also begin to have conversations about what are our primary areas of growth and how we can, can we sustain through the budgeting process what already is present in our district. In October, we begin our partnership with our town administrator and all the town boards by discussing what would be presented as an educationally sound and fiscally responsible budget, which then continues to provide for voter approval at town meeting, which we've enjoyed for a number of consecutive years. That collaboration and that partnership does provide us, through realizing warrant articles, when our needs exceed what the budget can, can absolutely afford in any given year. Some perfect examples is the Lincoln Street renovation building project this past year, the Z Boila project, which was successfully passed at town meeting. And this year, we are moving forward with a warrant article to upgrade our schools around safety and security measures that we will be putting in place at all schools. If we were to do that, in the operational budget, it may take several years or more. And we do have some schools that we would like to see brought up to the same level, and all schools brought up to a higher level of safety within our schools. So that's moving forward at the town meeting floor this year. And again, in partnership with the town. We do meet as a capital planning subcommittee tonight. I mentioned, we did have a voted and approved capital planning budget presented, and that is also shared with the town because it becomes part of their long-range and short-range planning process. And that generates the warrant articles that we see. The school committee then votes on those budget- The school committee then votes on those budget goals. In November, we gather together in conversations about what a preliminary budget numbers may look like, based on enrollments, based on the conversations that have taken place around programming, professional development, but also where we are with our auxiliary support, our financial supports, which would include any reductions in our grants, federal and state grants that may have taken place since July. It is not uncommon for us to assume a grant funding, funded amount and plan for that and expend it in our minds and on paper in July 1, only to have that budget and that grant reduced in August or September. So those are important conversations. And we continue the review of the budget process. We are about a month earlier this year in our preliminary budget. I was quite amazed as I was preparing the PowerPoint, which is again, just a preliminary budget. A lot of things can change between just this evening and January, like staffing changes, notifications of retirements, which by contract are not due until January 15. And so I was particularly surprised to add the new date and find that the old date was exactly pretty much the same, January 5. So we're ahead and that's great because we can, we can have some more conversations and ready our budget for town meeting. We also, last night, as a matter of fact, had a gathering of the operational budget subcommittee of the Northborough School Committee and reviewed this in preparation for this evening. And because we are early in the preliminary budgeting process, whether we vote in January or wait until February is actually a conversation that we will have with the school committee. And then depending on that, we may have our public hearing a little bit earlier than last year. By law, we have to do, we have to offer a public hearing, which is a reading of the budget into the record 60 days prior to the town meeting vote. So we would be able to do that in March this year, depending on our voting cycle. Last month, I think Mrs. Frank suggested that we number the budget. I brought back our compromise suggestion and said, what if we align some of our budget, preliminary budget increases with our goals? And so we thought we would try this for a visual and easily digestible view of how some of the increases and changes that we're representing in the budget really do tie in very nicely to our budget goals. So the first budget goals, and these were voted on by school committee in October, distributed each month, are to maintain and support high-quality staff and instructional programs and support class size, student-teacher ratios in accordance with class size policy. As I mentioned earlier, each month, we review our enrollment status and are very watchful and mindful of our class sizes. We try very diligently to stay exactly within our class sizes. Sometimes it's not feasible. We have a student who just enrolls and that child enrolls in September and that puts class sizes one or two students above. I'm pleased to report that based on preliminary analysis of our current enrollments, we are within our class size ranges at the present time in all but maybe one section. We do know also that in the summer, it's not impossible for us to see fluctuations fairly drastically of 68 students moving in and we're not sure how many move out. So we're very cautious and watchful over those numbers throughout the summer as well. And again, support the I-240 policy. We anticipate that there will be, based on student enrollments, some potential staffing shifts. It's too early in the process to articulate an exact number or where those staffing reductions would be. But we do know that we do have some enrollment shifts downward over the last several years. And our staffing needs to maintain adequate staffing to meet those enrollments, whether there's a shift down or a shift upward. This is not a trend that is unique to Northborough. The Northeast in general is seeing a decline in enrollments. And that's anticipated to continue through about 2023, maybe even 2025 at this point, at least with our NESDEC and Census projections. So we do detailed projections of enrollment using actuals, NESDEC, and Census. To, so that is something that we will be considering as we finalize our numbers and finalize our recommended budget. We also have been having conversations for a number of, I'm going to say years, because this is my eighth, and I think we've been talking about this for eight years now, about how we can increase the support, particularly in our financial area at the central office. As much as the school committee, as much as the Department of Elementary and Secondary Ed was surprised to find out we have three districts, they were also surprised to find out that we have three unique school committees and three budgets. And so through our office with grants and our budgets combined, the finance office process is close to $90 million of finance with limited staff. We've spent a lot of time and have had input from a number of organizations like Masbo and Melanson &amp; Heath. And they've been suggesting to us ways that we could improve, not improve, but grow in the areas of projects that we take on at central office, particularly in the area of finance. And one of the things that is fortunate for any one of our three budgets, operational budgets, is that when there is a shift or a change at central office, no one district incurs the entire cost of that addition. So the percentage allocation to each district is based on overall enrollment by district. And that's basically how central office is funded. So for Northborough, it is a larger district. Anything we propose is 40%, not 100%. Our two-member, other-member districts, because of their population, is about 30%. In this case, we are proposing that we create an assistant director of finance, which we do not have at this point and have not had at any point. We have some money in the operational budget due to shifts in staffing that would allow us to hopefully create this position with no FTE increase. That's no additional bodies in terms of staffing and just make some shifts within our already existing operational budget. We also have a practice and have an established practice over the creation of these budgets of migrating people who are now on grants, very important positions that are either at the school level or in administration or at the district level, who are paid on grants, eventually onto operational budget. This is done over a period of years. So when we see an opportunity to transition a small portion of an individual's salary perhaps, who may or may not be fully funded in the operational budget, but funded now partially through grants, we try to make those incremental shifts over time. So there's never a significant hit in any budget year to any one budget. We do have someone who, we do have a position that is a key position that we would like to start moving more onto budget and not onto, holistically onto grant. Just this year, and you'll see shortly, one of our grants is completely dissolved. And when that happens, significant changes in services can happen if there's no other place to fund that position. We also, at our highest priority and probably should be highlighted and starred, seek to meet the needs of all learners with instructional classroom models that are research-based and reflect based best practices. In this case, this evening, we had a wonderful presentation from Rhoda, as always. And what we did see yet again this year is an increase in the supports that are required, whether it be translation services, direct classroom instruction, or just fulfilling the many state mandates that are associated with providing EL services and supports that are necessary to our students and our families in the area of English language learning. So at this point, we do have a position in district, in one of our districts, that has successfully moved forward and now has risen to teacher status and is licensed in the area of EL. And we're proposing that because of the increased population in the K8s in Northborough, that we seize the opportunity to have someone who's very skilled and very knowledgeable in this area and move this person to a teaching position. This would be a new position within the K8s, but someone who's familiar to our district. Whoops. Also is to support, student support services at the K8 level by increasing the current position of occupational therapist from four days to five days. We find that based on the need of our students, there is also a need to increase student contact hours and student service hours. This individual is already in the district. It would be a slight increase to the hours, no additional full-time equivalency added to the budget. We also seek to expand our professional development for all teachers with an emphasis on providing support for programs and professional development to support structured, multisensory-based reading programs and the social-emotional health of all children. I think this was a modification to the goal made by school committee this year. Really does speak to the ever-growing need, not only to provide the training for our teachers, to support the programs and our students in the classrooms, but also to continue to invest in the social-emotional health of our children. We had a wonderful presentation from Dr. Barnhart, who talked about how they approach RTI, response to intervention in the classroom. And as unique as each school is, there are also different models as well that we embrace as a district. And so what we're looking at, and this has been something that's been discussed within our district, within our principal population, and they're all shaking their heads, yes? So please feel free to join in, is the addition of a team chair. A team chairperson really does, and Marie, you can probably better articulate this than I, but really lift a lot of the burden that's placed on the classroom teachers right now in running very complicated, very complex meetings, very important meetings with parents. And providing this team chair would provide a highly skilled individual who's knowledgeable, specific to this area, and alleviate a lot of the time that our teachers are now maybe out of the classroom in meetings or spending a lot of time with paperwork. That consistency also will provide for a a very well-defined response to parents' concerns in these meetings and in, provide that response in a way that supports a parent's needs when trying to navigate through this process of servicing their students' needs. So Marie, I don't know if you want to add a little bit more to that. I know we've been talking about this for a number of years, as well as the principals. This is a start. I think what you'll see, if we are really to fully invest in this, is probably an addition of a team chairperson, individual every year in the budget. It's been some time that we've had this conversation and now we find an opportunity where we may be able to make some headway in this funding and this staffing model.
The team chairperson brings the consistency of approach to team meetings. So it also alleviates, like Christine just said, the need for the special ed liaison to do the paperwork for team meetings. So that really frees up their time to be face-to-face with the students, which is what we want them to do. We want them to do more, to be with students for instructional purposes and not to be spending as much time in meetings. We have seen the benefit of this position in Southborough. And this is a much-needed position in the Northborough District. And it's a start. And we're really hoping that it will be funded and that our teachers will be allowed more face time with students in the classroom.
I do want to make note, and I think this is an important note. In the operational budget, we are not asking for funding. We are asking for the increase of a team chair. Because what we are going to be able to do is shift the cost, basically, or share the cost with this position on a grant that we, that we were able to secure through the Metro West Foundation. And that grant will sunset next year. We do have a staff member who is now on the operational budget, who will shift to the grant, which I know is exactly the opposite of what I said earlier. But we seize every opportunity that we have to maximize every funding source that we have. And so this will allow us to add a team chair position, but not increase the operational budget. So I think that's important. We will be shifting the funding for this position and the employee to the grant. But it's already, the monies are already in the budget. So the people will stay, the funding source will change, and the funding source is already available.
Can I ask a question? So how long is the grant, is it a one-year grant? So then would it then, the following year become a?
It is a multi-year grant.
Okay.
It is the sunset year of this grant. Grants, most all grants have a sunset provision. But it will give us a lot, an opportunity to pilot a program that we have tried to fund and to put into place for a number of years. And so that pilot will give us a good opportunity to examine the practice. And then in FY '21, we will be looking for funding for that. But we don't always get the opportunity to have a good year to fund what we believe is going to make a significant difference. And this is a great opportunity to maximize this, this time. So thank you. We also, as I mentioned, are going forward with a warrant article for, at this point, we have preliminary approval from the town for this warrant article. It is to enhance our safe school readiness, facility, equipment and supports in our schools. And it is a $190,000 warrant article, which will not impact the operational budget, but noteworthy here because it is a budget goal that we've had and a budget priority for the district. I can, we try not to give specifics around things that are specific to safe school readiness. But I can suggest that it would, we'd be looking at keyless entry. We'd be looking at upgrading our communications across the board. We have two schools who have new phone system, one because of a renovation, the other because we had a failed phone system. And we were able to recoup our expenses through insurance. And so this would bring all of our schools to a level of excellence in terms of telecommunications. But also, that upgrade alone enhances our ability to communicate within our schools during critical moments, critical incidents, whether it's an intruder or simply communicating across the schools. From time to time, we've had difficulty, I think particularly at Melican, where we've had some systems that have gone down occasionally because of just the archaic and aging out of our telecommunications system. So this would bring all of our schools up to the same level of efficiency at one time, which we're very excited about. While there's no specific funding request for the last bullet, I think everything that we do in our schools really does speak to, including this operational budget, our desire to ensure that all students have an educational program consistent with and prepare them to be successful and attain their level of personal best on any district or state assessment, particularly MCAS. The last two budget some goals this year were to make state benchmarks and district educational technology and funding goals, identify the technology implementation plan. As you may recall, the strategic plan was crafted about seven years ago now. And one of the cornerstone focus areas was technology. Because technology is so intricate in terms of implementation, we developed a side document, which is called the Technology Implementation Plan. We actually looked at it again the other day as we were preparing and said, wow, we've made a lot of progress in this area since that document was created. One of the things we've been able to do is update our infrastructure and update access to hardware, reliable devices, moving forward with a more personal device approach with one-to-one at the two-to-eight level and two-to-one at K1. one-to-one at the two-to-eight level and two-to-one at K one, but I think we're pretty close to one-to-one across the board, certainly with the help of NEF. We also had, we have technical support within each schools, within each of our schools, but really have lagged behind with our instructional teacher support in terms of utilizing technology integration from an instructional curriculum standpoint in the classroom. And so this drives us forward one more step, meeting that goal in providing a technical aid, technology instructional aid in the classroom. So we're excited about that. And then the last one, also equally excited, been a lot of conversation, not just the beginning of this year, but two years prior, around determining the feasibility of transitioning to a tuition-free full-day kindergarten program. This year does support the year one of that model. And I am optimistic that as we continue the budgeting cycle, and the cycle is really approval and expending, which is from July 1 through the year, that as we see opportunities to season the budget, our hope is that we're going to be able to accelerate this program. I like to be conservative in our projections. Our conservative projection is three to five years. In actuality, we've been able to expedite that because of, just watchful expenditures over the budget as always, but mindfully then, looking for opportunities to continue to shift more funding onto the budget and less dependency on revolving funds, which are tuition-generated for kindergarten. So this year is a good first step and it is consistent with the model presented. Again, optimistic that we're going to be able to expedite this process and to do this in a way where we're still able to support all of the other needs that are represented through our budget goals, but also appreciate the importance of also fulfilling this goal as well. So this is in the preliminary budget for approval. Having said that, I also want to share with you a couple of things that basically negatively impacted the budget. And by that, I mean quite simply, we had to make sure that these were represented in the preliminary budget. So if in fact it was a grant that we were dependent upon, like the NERTH, the Essential School Health Grant, which provided float nurses for our schools, which provided some professional development, which provided funding for nurses that do need to accompany field trips when the school, the children are out on a field trip and there's an identified need for assistance. And so that funding is gone. We have been able, through this preliminary budget, to shift the expenses that would have ordinarily been covered under this grant onto the operational budget. So that's been realized through the preliminary budget that I'm going to share with you this evening. Also, the elimination of a sped improvement grant that provided that very important professional development as we were beginning programs here in the district. For example, we started a language-based program. It's housed at Z. We know that that program has allowed us to retain students. Marie was very ecstatic one day when she returned to say that we were able to keep a student in district simply because we had that program in place. And that's often what we ask. If we start this, then will. And so now we know the answer is yes, it will keep students in-house. So that was an all-in effort by a whole lot of folks. This grant provided for folks to come in and work with our staff to help build that program. Landmark, which was in the district, working with us for that very specialized professional development for reading programs, was funded through this grant. And we started a therapeutic program as well, shared, cost shared with Northborough and Southborough, which is housed in Lincoln Street. I'm pleased to say that we do have students enrolled in that program and they've been able to stay in their home, in their neighborhood schools and to stay in the schools where they're living and they're residing. So very successful program. We've had to migrate. That money is important. It is critical. And so we've also factored that into the operational budget this year. We are in next year, year three of our three-year contract with all nine associations. And so we do negotiate with nine associations when it becomes time for contracts to be renewed. The COLA increases alone on the FY20 budgeting process was approximately $850,000. It isn't just COLA. We are very fortunate to have educators who are committed to the continuation of their professional growth and continue to be educated themselves. And so that amount really also reflects the contractual steps in lane, which allow them to realize an increase for all of their hard work in terms of seeking further education so that they can apply that to their classroom and teaching and learning. We had some great news because as there are impacts, there are some years offset. After much letter writing to the state by our school committee, by superintendent's association, by the teachers' association, the state, which really is supposed to fund circuit breaker, which is a reimbursement on expenditures for special education that exceed a certain limit set by the state. So anything expended over a foundation number is eligible for reimbursement from the state. The law says it's supposed to be 100%, I think. It's never been 100%. It's been hovering at a 65% reimbursement rate. Last year in particular, the state was flooded with requests to increase that number. So we are seeing now a 72% increase on above foundation expenditures, which really gave us some relief to offset some of those things that we want to see in the budget and some of those things that have risen in cost. And so without that offset, the budget I'm going to share with you this evening probably would not have been possible. We also appreciate that we may have some reductions due to retirements and other changes because of enrollments. We'll have a clearer picture for that next month when we present the recommended budget. We are going to realize some savings for the boiler at Z School. It can be as much as $35,000 because of the installation of that new boiler. And so we're looking forward to that. And Amy says hi to the boiler every day and is glad that it's operating and running just fine, right? Great work by Tom Adler and the maintenance team for installing that over Thanksgiving weekend, Veterans Weekend. And so that's up and it's all fired up. We did have some reductions in specialized services through the great work of everyone in the classroom and in the buildings and in collaboration with special education staff. We were able to reduce the cost of some of the specialized services that we are providing for our students, partly because of what we're doing in our schools and partly because of need. So that offset was helpful to the budget. We also have some projected decreases in tuition out and a decrease in our collaborative costs. We have the great opportunity of placing our students who may need to have services beyond what we have, what we're able to provide in the district for them, with the Assavet Valley Collaborative. And we also have extended services provided through them. And so that was a reduction as well. So all of that together then brings me to the final slides, just as a, and I'm not sure why it's valued, but that value is about 21 million. So this is just a very, very simplified snapshot of our budget. 81% of our budget, we are a human resource-rich profession. And 81% of our budget is based in salaries, support and support for those salaries. It's about 21 million on the overall operational budget, which leaves 19% for all the other line items in the budget. So that's just a simplified representation of it. And so this evening, I'm presenting the preliminary FY20 budget, $25,50,209, which is a 3.23% over FY19's budget for an increase of $784,616. Again, I would like to just put in perspective the contractual obligations cost, which exceeded our current increase, but because of all those other impacts and offsets, we've been able to present what I think is a very educationally sound and fiscally responsible budget. In terms of increases, we're able to sustain, because of the support from the community, increases that allow us to maintain what we are able to provide each and every day to our students, but also to see growth in areas like transitioning full-day K to free full-day K, tuition-free K, and also to add incremental pieces of support that we've been, and that we've been asking to see grow and add into the budget, but also that we need to put in place to service the needs of all of our students. So that's where we are in December, December 5.
Thank you so much. Appreciate all the hard work you've put in preparing the budget.
I would like to say that, I may be presenting it, but there's a whole bunch of wonderful staff members who have spent a lot of time chattering pencils and having conversations with other people. And each and every one of the numbers that are represented in the budget represents a lot of discussion and a lot of work by our principals, our central office staff. And it's been a good process.
Thank you. I'll open it up for any comments or questions for the committee.
I have, I have three. Christine, on page three of this slide, where you have the goals, and you had mentioned it in your presentation a little bit earlier, that you had taken my request to put after the goal, I said numbers last month, and you had done the alpha. Is that going to be put back in? Because yesterday-
The alpha-
These are the alpha things. So she put it under it.
So all of the As are under where the goal is? So that, instead of complicating it with alphas and As and Bs and Cs?
Oh, you're going to put it just underneath?
They are under there.
That's how it's underneath.
They are under there now.
Okay.
She just took all of the As that we had.
Because I just, can I continue?
Yeah.
Make sure the chair. Thank you. And thank you, Kelly. Because if I just look at one goal, such as if I look at the third goal, expand professional development for all teachers, wouldn't that, wouldn't that be in other places in the budget under professional development?
I did not take the 600 line items and put them in the budget.
Oh, I understand that.
I did, however, take the drivers of the increases that are reflected in the budget specific to these goals and align them to that. So that's what we talked, that's what the As and the Bs and the Cs represented.
Okay.
I just eliminated the As and the Bs and the Cs and put them under the specific goal that they are tied to.
Yeah.
So this one.
Yeah, okay. Because I, I guess that was my misunderstanding, because I, I see, you know, professional development, but I just see it's a team chairperson. I guess I just wanted, my own personal feeling was to see where that professional development was, or where were the multisensory reading programs or the social emotional health of the children in a line item. But maybe you and I can have that discussion.
I'm not sure how simplified it can be when professional development is embedded not only in this operational budget, but also in the grants. So we have, which aren't represented in the operational budget. And a significant portion of the professional development that at least is done in the district-wide basis is not funded through the operational budget. It's funded through, for example, Title II, the grant for educator quality. It's funded in part through RODA's Title III grant for English language learners, and it's funded in part through special education. We identified a couple of the places in this budget where that's clearly represented. Marie has a line item that funds things like Landmark coming in and those specialized contract service providers. And it's a great question because we've talked about that in the previous years, that one of the things that the district does well is not sort of hire an individual in any given year through the operational budget, when in fact it's a short-term professional development training experience that the teachers require. So for example, Landmark School, when Landmark was coming in and working with our teachers to do reading consultation, we didn't hire a specific person. In other words, we didn't put them on payroll and hire them as an employee. We're able to pay that fee, if you will, through the contracted service line item for that type of service in the operational budget. So I can certainly take that function code and apply it to that specific instance. It might be informative to go through the grants and highlight where the grants support professional development as well. So for example, our instructional rounds initiative, we have someone coming in that all of our, several of our administrators experienced when they went to Harvard for the initial training. We sent cohorts out to Harvard and then wanted to bring that training in-house. That trainer, that consultant, is paid on the Title II grant. And so it's not impacting the operational budget that we vote. It's separate from that. When we bring in other consultants, let's say, they're here either for a temporary basis to fulfill a specific goal of training staff on a specific area. So I think the specific question you had about multisensory could definitely be applied to the conversation we had about the $34,000 grant that funded the person from Landmark coming in and doing the training. So I'd be happy to sit down to get a clearer idea of what you're looking to have represented here. I did do a little research at Central when we talked about this last week. I actually went back to Cheryl and I said, okay, what are we? And she didn't have any recollection.
She didn't have any recollection.
But I went back to mine. All my old budgets are gone.
So I didn't, I've tried to go through my history and try to get-
But I welcome an opportunity to sit down and go through it together.
Yeah. I mean, maybe as we get further on the budget season, I don't want to create more work and you have to put all the numbers underneath it, but just so that I have an idea of what is supporting that. And maybe it's just a discussion, no, no extra work with a written report or something like that.
Specific, I think some specific examples of what you're looking to see would be helpful because there's PD here, there, and everywhere. Teachers have professional development, they have a particular professional development line item. Administrators have a professional development line item that they might go on a conference. So there are some line items in the budget that are specifically identified professional development and have a nominal amount of money. The two overarching line items that are really PD-oriented, or let's say innovative staffing, might be our curriculum R and D line item in the budget. And that might be a primary area of support. But as a district, in terms of professional development, there is no significant amount of money in a specific line item that supports these things because we try to use grant funds.
Okay. Maybe later further in the budget season. No extra work. I'm not asking for any changes. On page-
I don't mind the extra work. I just need to have a target.
I don't want to be responsible for extra work. You guys are working hard enough. On page four, when you talk about the budget impacts, when you talk about the Essential School Health Grant, is that the one that Laurie Partey, former employee, is that the one that she was the nurse leader on?
Nurse leader, right.
Is there a way that, and I believe, because remember she made a presentation, I think once, I can see it in the region, or at a combined meeting at the region, this is a three-year, was this a three-year grant, so we're at the end of the third year of the grant?
So the grant has evolved and we had a long conversation. So the grant as we know it, which funded those kinds of things that I mentioned in the presentation, like float nurses, we have to have a nurse in the building. And nurses get sick. So when they're out, who can we get to be in the building to do what needs to be done for the students and the staff? So it funded a lot of the sort of sub compensation that was needed to fill those positions. The grant, the way it was reauthorized, does not provide for the same kinds of things The grant, the, the way it was reauthorized, does not provide for the same kinds of things that the grant provided for in this format. So we met Lori, myself, Lori Perkins, and a nurse from Peaslee, and a nurse from one of the other districts, and discussed what is it that they're expecting districts to do in order to be eligible for any additional funding. So the way that it was funded in the past no longer exists. So they will not, no matter what need a district has, fund anything that the previous grant funded. It would fund, for example, a district collaboration, a multi-district collaboration for a new and innovative programming, innovative program. It would fund, I'm trying to think of what the other item it would fund. But after a thorough review of what it was that they were asking districts or singular, singular districts to do in order to act, to access these funds, it didn't apply in our situation. So it was pretty much a unanimous decision to say-
Not to apply for the grant, then?
It doesn't fit.
It doesn't fit our needs.
Or our, our needs don't fit the criteria of the grant now. So the good news is that amount of money was able to be shared. So the 84 wasn't, wasn't, that was the amount of the grant, but we shared that with the other districts. So our portion of it was about 50, but all totaled, it was about 84,000. So we had to absorb about 50,000 in the operational budget in order to be able to keep float nurses in our schools, for nurses to have substitutes, to be able to have nurses on our buses for field trips, which we are required to provide. And so we were able to include that. That's increased in the nurse substitute line item.
So sometimes that's what happens, they give you a grant, but then each year you have to absorb some of it. So that's what happened.
This was, we had to absorb it in one year.
In one year. So everything that you got for, that we had received for the three years, now we have to absorb it in our budget, and we will not be applying for the grant because of-
The criteria for the grant.
The criteria on it, okay.
It would only-
I was going to say, let's, let's reapply for that grant.
Unanimous decision of the nurses that, who attended the session of DPH, Department of Public Health. And part of the problem was, there had, was a hope by everyone that when the grant was reauthorized, it was known that it was going to be reauthorized, and that when it was reauthorized, it would fund what was funded. And really, the release of the new language for the grant wasn't available, I think it was October that, October and November, when they actually had the informational session, and our nurses and Lori went to that. And just, just so, Lori is retired, but she was in today. So she's helping to bridge the services until we're able to replace her position. I think, just as a side note, a lot of folks, including Lori, have reviewed the, the description, and so it will be reposted, it will be posted as a health and wellness sort of coordinator for the district, which is what Lori did, but it's no longer called a nurse leader. It's doing what Lori did very well for many years, but expanding the role a little bit more.
And then the last one is, has John Quardere given us a range or anything for the town budgets and town departments to grow by for next year?
So John always gives a range, and that range is usually reduced at some point. I think one time it was, it was during February vacation. So the target right now, and he's, he's, I think he'll share that in financial monitoring, the trend analysis, I think he's still sharpening his pencil as well, but it is within a three to a, like a three and a half range.
So we're, we're within the range?
We're within the range. And this is a, a greater increase than we've actually had, like two years ago, I think we were 3.19. Great questions. I love to talk budget, Jones, ask me some more questions.
See, I'm asking the questions because I'm not financial. So I appreciate you explaining that to me, and I think that, and I applaud, one less, one less comment.
Sure.
Is, through my history of being on the board, it's nice to have, to come close to the range, instead of having everything that we need and then have to whittle down. And it is amazing to the principals, thinking it's December the 5th, just the beginning of December, and you have a model here. So it shows you that you probably opened up the schools, and you were working to see what the needs already were going to be for the next class coming in, in September.
I do have to say-
A lot of hard work on this.
And it, more, more importantly, in, in a nod to the principals, and to your point as well, oftentimes during the budgeting process, it is necessary to whittle, and in those cases, the principals also have to engage in that process. And this year, I think what we were able to do in this budget is to bring back some of those line items that had to be whittled last year, while oftentimes it's possible, because heating wasn't as, you know, as, as expended as it might be in other seasons. This year we'll have no snow, so we'll save money on snow plowing and time traveling. And so when there's no snow, that's good for the budget, too, because that means we don't expend funds for extra hours and things like that, rock salt and whatnot. And so we were able to, you know, purchase some of the things that we, we cut, but not all. So this year's budget, I think, might be the first where we didn't go back and say, "You're going to have to turn your line items." It may still happen, because, you know, this is preliminary, but at this point, we were able to see at least an incremental increase to back where they would like to see it when you submitted the budget, so.
Well, I think it's, it's good numbers, and along with the good practices that we've seen through the school improvement plans, you know, and also hats off to, you know, Marie and her department. But, you know, some of those things we do, as you mentioned, the response to intervention and everything, that's, that's going to help if we can identify, and as Jill said, there's just, look at the data and what we're going to do with it, and what you've been doing with the principals and looking at, you know, MCAS scores and any other type of assessments that are going on. So that helps into this budget season also. Thank you. I'm done.
Kelly, Amy?
Thank you so much. It's time to think out a two. Jill, you can keep the presentation on your computer if you'd like. Thank you, Jill.
We're going to put a new laptop in the budget.
That's goal number-
Yeah.
Technology, technology.
Yes. No more presentations.
Tonight, more presentation. Make myself comfortable. The next item on the agenda, which we haven't had this time, after that policy development and/or distribution, we have three second readings in our packet here. G160 Staff Responsible Use Policy, Student Responsible Use Policy, Employee's Social Media Policy. So I believe we read these last month, so we'll bring them back. Was there any changes on these, or were we just?
We received no changes. And I think the goal is to bring these to the combined policy subcommittee to vote as combined policies. So Northborough, Southborough's in the same process as well as the region, and as soon as they have their second readings, they send it back to the policy, combined policy subcommittee for approval.
Yes, I have one question. On the first one, G160, in the second line, in parentheses, we have the acronym R U G P. We crossed out the G.
They crossed off the guidelines here.
Right, but it's still in the acronym.
No, it's a line through that, too.
Oh, it is?
That's a little line through it, yeah.
Oh, sorry. Okay. Yeah, because down in the second paragraph, then I saw the R U P, and the G was gone.
Yeah, yeah.
Sorry.
You have to look really close to see that.
That's my idea. Thank you.
We'll see these at combine. In two weeks, in two weeks. Next item on the agenda is audience sharing. Is there anybody in the audience that would like to share this evening?
Patiently waiting.
There's no wait this long in town. Could be raining this whole time. My name's Kristen Williams, teacher, I live in Sixley, Linda Ave, and in Northborough. I guess where I grew up in Northborough, brought to this school system, and I hope my kids will be, too. I want to say thank you for putting in that first year as next year's budget. As a mother of four and a half-year-old and my middle child, I will be anxiously waiting that packet next week and setting all that up. So that's, I think, a great first step, and I appreciate you trying to, like, setting that goal rather than 2023, with that was sort of a, what are we doing, and then, so it's great to see that. And I would also hope that we could, for you all, when you look at your budget, could think about what's really critical and what's, you know, maybe can be put off. One thing that caught my eye, and I love Joan's suggestion of putting things under the bulletins, is what does it equal? It makes it much more tangible for those of us who don't, are not budgetary, who don't think in numbers. Like keyless entry, for example, caught my eye, which is great. When I did research at UMass Medical School, I had keyless entry right off the belt, and then you just go in. But now the college I work at, you have a key, and it's just, oh, put a little hole keys in my office and my classroom. So keeping, I hope, the pre-kind with the kindergarten, full-day tuition-free, to make the Northborough kids on the same plane, and the Northborough families on the same plane as the Southborough families, when it comes at least to our public schools. I appreciate that being sort of a high goal, and sort of trying to meet that as a parent, and I know I'm not the only one, trying to raise, you know, a family of five on one income in a very expensive town where I spend thousands of dollars each quarter on taxes, and then I spend a thousand more for full-day kindergarten. I appreciate you guys keeping that in mind, and, and which was reflected in your goals. And so that was really what I want to say, was thinking, and I hope that continues and progresses as fast as it can, keeping that in mind. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, Kristen.
Can I just say, thanks for having her? You waited.
Thanks, Kristen. Any other, any other audience sharing? Pencils, anything to share?
Do you want me to read Jen's?
Sure, I have Jen. You could do a paragraph, I could do a paragraph. You could read it all. I think I've had enough to say tonight.
So I'll do Lincoln Schools. Jen shares that on November 8th, the Lincoln School community celebrated Veterans Day. They were joined by the Honor Guard for Northborough's American Legion, Vincent Picard, post 234, as well as dear family and friends of the Lincoln School students. On November 29th, Lincoln and Peaslee families gathered at the Lincoln School and retreated to our first elementary school music informant's. Thank you to our music team, Mrs. Wayland, Mrs. McCarr, and Mr. DeKeele for creating this event to allow our fourth and fifth grade students to share what they have been learning in music, band, and chorus. We will look forward to doing this again next year. And finally, a thank you to Lincoln Street PTO for treating us to an interactive performance by the New England Percussion Ensemble this past Monday. Students and staff had a blast in this energetic program in which eyes, ears, and hands are opened by the many melodic, rhythmic, and tonal possibilities of percussion. Mine is not so eloquent, but I'll do C C O. Those words are very good. We also did Veterans Assembly, and we were joined by veterans from, of relatives of our students and families at the Z community, as well as the Color Guard. It was obviously my first Veterans Assembly, and it was great to see. One of the unique presentations, I thought, where our fourth and fifth graders did, wrote their own poems and read those poems to the veterans, and I thought that was just a nice sharing out from that community. Also, we've had a lot of enrichment programs over the last month. Our third graders went to Plymouth Plantation, our fourth graders visited the Lowell Mills. In-house presentations, fourth graders saw a laser light show, and third graders were given a presentation on force and magnetism. And also the Quarter 9 grant, mini-grant was given to Matt Burton Arzy in our building. He's an occupational therapist, and the money that he received for the mini-grant is going towards a self-regulation workstation for students K5.
So Proctor also enjoyed a performance from New England Percussion on the same day as Lincoln Streets. We had partnered up, and our PTO supported that as well, and the students loved it. There was a lot of dancing and clapping and audience participation. It was very, very well received by all the childrens. We'd love to have them back again. This month, our theme is diversity for December, and celebrating and recognizing all the unique differences that make up our community, and we're engaging in a lot of outreach and community service during the month of December. We're partnering up with the Red Sox, Sox for Sox, and we're collecting socks and mittens and hats. And in our partnership with them, we're extending that a little bit to something more local with Central Mass. There's a healthcare organization that also gives to the homeless. So between those two organizations, we're taking up a collection the next couple of weeks, and then we'll make the deliveries to the Red Sox and to the Community Health Link. Our third graders are going to go to the Senior Center in December in Carroll during the lunchtime. They have a nice cafe up there, so they're going to do some singing. Our partnership with the Rotary Club also started up this month of providing backpacks to families in need over the weekend. So we had our first packing last week and distribution, and families were very grateful to receive that, and we're going to continue that weekly. So we're excited that that has been up and running. And lastly, we have a connection to Camp Foster in Okinawa, Japan. We are connected to the parachute riggers there. It's a new group of men and women that are in their very early twenties, it's their first time away from home during the holidays, so we're going to be sending letters to them and cards and just spreading a little bit of cheer during what could be a lonely time with their first time away from their families.
We have a lot going on as well. Ellen Miller from the District Attorney's Office visited on Friday, this past Friday, to present to our sixth graders about digital footprint, internet safety, and she, we asked her to specifically focus on some relevant topics for our sixth graders, including online gaming and the interactions that they have with people they may not know. So it was very well received. I got a few emails from parents thanking us and saying that they had some nice discussions with their kids over the weekend about it, so that was a success. Our parents recently gained access to Canvas, their own online access, so they're able to keep up with what's going on in terms of grades and assignments and upcoming academics. So that's very exciting. We had a parent information night about Canvas last night, and what was really, what really was, I thought, important and interesting was that we had some EL families, and our two ELA teachers, our EL teachers, Lonnie Soder and Catherine Arcona, served as interpreters for those parents, and the group was fairly small, so we were able to offer one-to-one support to all parents who were there, so that was really, really exciting. Our plan is to offer two more sessions during the day, specifically targeted to our EL families, so that we can offer them targeted support. So we're excited about that. Next week is busy for us here, our winter concert, concert season is here, so Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday are concerts. We're excited about that. It's always nice to see the hard work that the kids have put in and see what they're able to do this time of year. The week after that, the whole week is dedicated after school to our, to auditions for our school musical, which is Once on This Island. So there's the schools a buzz about that, students are excited about their auditions. Our basketball teams have been formed, and they are practicing. They have four games before the next vacation, so they're working hard with their coaches. I'm excited about something that we do every year. Our teachers and staff participate in a giving tree that they coordinate, and they connect with families in the school and provide gifts and supports to families in need. Additionally, our students are- They have four games before the next vacation, so, um, they're working hard with their coaches. Uh, I'm excited about, um, something that we do every year. Our, um, teachers and staff participate in a giving tree that they coordinate, and, um, they connect with families, um, in the school and, um, provide gifts and supports to families in need. Additionally, our students are, um, supporting families within the community, um, this time of year. We are bringing some carolers to Beaumont as we do each year, and our seventh graders are preparing for their annual trip to Hanover Theater to see a Christmas carol on the 20th. So lots of exciting things. It's busy.
I already had a lot to say tonight, so I'll try to keep this short. But I did want to mention that our grade two students, um, presented their family heritage projects to their parents. They did some singing, and then they each had worked on a, um, a project to illustrate their, uh, family backgrounds, you know, uh, what countries their families came from. So it was really exciting. We had a great turnout for that. We also had, um, parent conferences, our Veterans Day. One of the special things we did this year that was kind of new was, we invited children to bring in a picture or draw a picture of, um, a veteran that they know and to write something about them. So in the hallways, you could see many photos of children's grandfathers or little, um, stories about, um, family members who have served in the military or, um, are currently serving. We also had a family, um, who came in, mom and dad, um, dad is currently in the reserves, mom served in the Air Force, and they came in and did a presentation for our families. And then they had the opportunity to, um, go in and actually visit in some of the classrooms, and dad brought in some of his equipment, which was quite thrilling to the children. This is also the, um, dad who Skyped with the classroom last year when he was deployed overseas. So it was really exciting. And I also wanted to mention that, um, the, I had an opportunity to attend the Worcester State reception for the teachers who have completed the program there. It was very exciting. It was a lovely evening, and I know the teachers were really grateful to have that, um, support and recognition by the, uh, district. And, um, talking about excitement in the school, the biggest excitement for Peaslee School recently has been that we had a fox that came to visit us last week, uninvited. Children were outside, so we had to make an announcement and get them inside very quickly. Just when we thought that maybe we could go back out for afternoon recess, didn't that fox come back. So it was very exciting, but I understand children were not upset. Apparently, this is quite typical in Northborough these days. I think some of the building has impacted the habitats of our wildlife friends, and foxes are making rather frequent appearances in the Peaslee neighborhood. So lots of excitement, lots of fun.
Um, I have some, um, uh, Northborough and Southborough Special Education Parent Advisor Council update for December. All of their most up-to-date schedules on their website at www.nspac.org. Everyone's invited to welcome, is welcome to come and join all their events and meetings. Some topics are related to all learner students and some are specific to, um, you know, special need type things, but, um, all parents are interested and welcome to come. There's no regular meeting in December. Their next regular meeting will be, uh, regular, um, monthly meetings will be in January 23rd on Wednesday at, um, the Northborough Library at 10:00 AM. Hopefully, they've got scheduled, um, the Transition Counselor, Monique Cludier, from Algonquin, is tentatively scheduled to discuss the transition process for the students. Let's see. With the partnership of the Northborough Library, on Wednesday, uh, January 9th, Michael Dalman, author of Your Kid's Gonna Be Okay: Building the Executive Functioning Skills Your Child Needs and the Age of Attention, will be presented at the Northborough Library at 6:30. And finally, at Wednesday, February 6th at 7:00 PM, the Northborough author, Deborah Vlock, will discuss her book, um, at the Northborough Library, Parenting Children with Mental Health Challenges: A Guide to Life with Emotional Complex Kids. So that's that stuff.
Pass.
Pass.
Believe it or not.
Come on.
I asked enough questions. I wouldn't stand myself tonight.
Uh, I think Master Plan Steering Committee is still working diligently towards, um, getting the master plan completed for the town of Northborough. Uh, they had a meeting last month focusing on the goals of the plan, and next month, on January 3rd, they will have another steering committee meeting to, um, focus discussion more around the recommendations that will support those goals. So it's still in progress and ongoing. All I've got.
This has been an evening of celebration, and in keeping with the month, it's hard to believe it's December. However, one celebrate, I hope it's joyful.
Great. So next, uh, I don't have any personnel items. The personnel report is in your packets. Communications, you've got it at this time. And then future agenda items, which will have another.
Recommended budget.
Budget update, or recommended budget. And, um, I assume we'll have another, uh, school PTO for next month or?
Not in January. I think we, I think we thought it would be a very busy budget discussion night, and it turned out it wasn't tonight. So I think we have a month without a scheduled PTO, or school improvement plan.
Sounds, sounds good. Approvals, approvals, payrolls, and any other business which may legally come before the committee. And with that, uh, entertain a motion to adjourn.
I make a motion to adjourn this evening's, uh, meeting?
Second, um, favor. We're adjourned.